I'd like to welcome you all here tonight. We're just a couple of minutes away from beginning the meeting. Before we begin, I'd invite you to stand and join me in the pledge and then Rick Evans will bring the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Here in the Father, we thank you again, Lord, all here safe again tonight. We pray that you will keep all the employees of the city safe, Lord, in everything they do. We pray that you will keep all the citizens in Springdale, local and state and federal government, Lord, in everything they do. Guide us tonight in everything we do.
Amen. Thank you, Rick. All right. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Springdale City Council. This is a regular meeting, Tuesday, July 23rd, 2019. Before I ask Rose to call the roll, I want to remind everybody, there's Chief Irwin there has some large print agendas. If that would be helpful to anyone, you're welcome to get one. And now we'll move and have the roll call.
Mayor Sprouse.
Here.
Amelia Williams.
Here.
Jeff Watson.
Here.
Mike Overton.
Here.
Koby Fulfer.
Here.
Mike Lawson.
Here.
Rick Evans.
Here.
Brian Powell.
Here.
Kathy J Cox.
Here.
Ernest Cade.
Here.
All right. Thank you. We are at item four on the agenda. I saw Scott here, Scott Edmondson, from the Chamber of Commerce, and he's going to bring the economic development report.
Thank you, Mayor Sprouse. I left each of you a copy of the quarterly economic development report. Lot going on still in 2019, and you'll see, we've had numerous projects all across town, whether it be manufacturing, retail, restaurant, office space inquiries. So things are really progressing well or staying strong, I guess, in 2019. Our new job growth has been outstanding, and according to the Department of Workforce Services, sixteen hundred and five jobs, new jobs were created in Springdale from the start of the year through the end of May.
Wow.
And sales tax receipts, as you can see, still show an increase over, seven percent increase over the first six months of 2018. Our unemployment remains one of the lowest in the state at 2.2 percent. That's as of May. Some projects that have been ongoing or nearing completion, the Walmart Contact Center is scheduled to open in the next few weeks or in the next month in August, and that will be have approximately 700 employees at the former Sam's Club property. So the NWTI welding program, they're groundbreaking for their new building, is tentatively slated for August the first. White Spider has moved into their new location on Emma Avenue. And then Highlands Oncology, they recently held their topping out ceremony on their building at the west end of Don Tyson. The new Napa Auto Parts store on Robinson is open for business, and work continues BNSF on their expansion on Forty-Eighth Street and Watkins, where they're basically doubling their size. And work continues on the Dollar General on Old Missouri Road near Don Tyson and the new O'Reilly Auto Parts store, which is going in on North Thompson. And early construction work has begun on the new car wash facility out on West Sunset. So again, a lot of projects going on right now around town. We did host our ACES, our academies for career educators in Springdale. That concentrates on workforce training. We held that back last month. Had over forty educators from the Springdale schools, along with thirty-five businesses that participated in the event. And our annual chicken peeling politicket event's coming up, scheduled for October 3rd.
All right. And for the folks watching and in the room, I think you, unless I missed it, you missed Mercy Health.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Want you to touch on that just for a minute?
Thank you, yes, on the Mercy Health project. That is scheduled for an opening late September, early October was the last word that we had on that. They can bring seventy-five to a hundred staff members to the new facility out on Elm Springs Road and Forty-Eighth Street, and they will be offering, you know, primary care, specialty physicians, emergency, and ultrasounds. So that's exciting to have that project nearing completion out on the west side of town, so.
Good deal. Any questions for Scott?
Good job.
All right. Doug, thanks, Scott.
Thank you very much.
All right. We are at item five on the agenda. This is the portion of each council meeting that the council sets aside to hear comments from citizens. If you'd like to address the council, you're welcome to come to the microphone. Please clearly state your name and address. Keep your comments brief, and know that the council won't take action on anything you have to say tonight. So anybody wants to speak anything that's not on tonight's agenda, it's all yours. Joe?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. And appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight. With me tonight is my aunt, Charlotte Steele, my mother, Marjorie Brooks, and I've also asked some friends from an adjoining city, from Bethel Heights, to come up here and share their stories with you all tonight. As you know, the Steele family has property in Springdale as well as in Bethel Heights. As many of you all know, I was asked to look into a situation for Charlotte's family late last year with wastewater continually running into their ponds and on their property. And after initial investigation, I engaged several experts and started a testing protocol with accredited, state-approved labs. And to be blunt, the results are horrific. And the sad thing about this is after eight months of beating our head against the wall, you know, it's still ongoing. So with that, it comes down to two situations. I mean, we've pushed, we filed lots of complaints, you know, and it's on record. It's been turned over to the county prosecutor in Benton County on the illegal pipelines that were run to discharge into the ponds. But while we wait on that, it's down to, do you go to federal court, get an injunction with, I had a letter from one of the downstream parties that's engaged with us on this, the Cherokee Nation of Oklahoma. Do you go through all that, you spend a lot of negative energy, get a restraining order, have to sue the state regulatory agency to enforce the law? And then you're going to have a battle trying to fix this mess to protect these people. That's a pretty negative way to go. Or the other option is a positive option. You go to the citizens and you engage the people, and you try to work together with positive people, and you try to fix this mess. Now, the group here today has already collected the petitions from Bethel Heights to put this on the agenda for an election later this year to dissolve the city. And what they want to ask is if Springdale will help. And if, I've already talked to your water and sewer department, we've talked to numerous experts to come in and try to help fix this mess for the safety of everybody. Now, that involves an election in Springdale, too. So after you hear their stories, I'm going to ask if we could have permission to start a petition drive in Springdale. We have to get twenty-eight hundred and forty signatures to put this on the ballot. And then both cities have to vote, and then you all get to inherit the mess and help me try to fix this. So at this time, Mr. Bowen, Mr. and Mrs. Bowen, would you like to come up here and speak? And then I'm going to let all of them briefly. These are people that live this. And by the way, guys, this council will engage you, so you can speak and they'll talk back because they're used to being shut out and ignored, so. This is Mr. Lawrence Bowen.
Yeah, I'm Lawrence Bowen, and I live next door to that sewer plant out there. And I've lived there since seventy-seven, and I think the year that they put that in, it's 206, I think it was, when they started having water problems with it. And when they first put it in, they wanted me to bale the hay off of it, and I baled the hay off of it a year or so, and the last three or four times I cut the hay to bail it, there was water running under my hay. And one day, I raked one round and the water was running under it, so I just shed everything off and went up there and told the mayor, "Mayor, I'm done with your hay. You can't bale hay with water running under it." And I turned it back over to them, and ever since then, I've had water running in my backyard. And I can't, I tried to keep my fence line mowed between me and them and keep it cleaned up, but I just give up on it and got my riding lawn mower stuck up there a time or two. And they try to mow over there, and they get stuck with the mowers. And in the backyard, it's just like, it's as black as this microphone all the time, and it's dried, and you wouldn't believe it if you go see it. And it's been ninety-some degrees weather here the last week, so. And they try to keep your brush hog down, and water's running in the tractor tacks, bubbling up, and it's bubbling up all. And they dug a ditch between me and them, across the fence from me, to try to keep it from coming over on me, and it's still coming over on me. It's dried up at the moment, but they're doing something else with the water right at this present time. And I'd appreciate all the help that you all could give us in any way on it. I've talked to them different times about it. The mayor, I went and faced to face with her, and she says, "We're going to fix it. We're going to fix it. You're going to be proud of it when we get it fixed." But it's never been fixed. It's just got worse ever since. And like I say, I'd appreciate all the help that we can get. We need, you know, it needs to be stopped. That pool and water is standing on it. And that's, again, a lot for me, looks to me like. And thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Joanna Bowen. I live at 323 East Apple Blossom in Bethel Heights. We have lived there forty-two years. Our property joins on the east side of this property, this wastewater property in Bethel Heights. For probably twelve years, there's always been wastewater, sewer water, on top of the ground. I live where I can see out my window. It's a mess, and it has been, and we can't seem to be getting anything done about it. But the smell is horrible. It's embarrassing when people say, "I come down your road, and the sewer smells awful." And that's embarrassing to us. We've been trying to be good neighbors and get along with them, but it seems like, you know, it's not working out. So we would really appreciate if you all could step up and help us out some way. It's time. We've always, they always say that they're going to work to fix it. Well, their fixing is hiding it behind tall weeds, tall grass, or running it on neighbor's property. So it's time that we really need something down there. Our health might be in jeopardy. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. One else? But don't read anything into if we're not asking you a bunch of questions. We're mostly here to listen tonight, but certainly, yeah, but we're certainly, they may have some questions along the way. Go ahead.
I'm Kevin Bowen. I live at 313 East Apple Blossom, and of course, that's my parents', and our property joins. And I have a swimming pool in the back of my yard, and they're supposed to bag the grass or bale the grass. They've never done it except for when my father and I were, I'd help him bale the hay or whatever, take care of the hay. That was the only time that it was ever taken off. We can't keep our pool clean. It's nasty. The sewage will run right into our backyard. I mean, I'm right on it. My backyard, like the grandkids, can't come outside and play. The mosquitoes, the gnats, my shop floods all the time, the sewer water runs across my driveway. My driveway's black, and it's white concrete driveway. I've lost a cattle dog over the deal because I had the pen back there. Cattle dog just spined one day, the next, and, you know, I'd let the dog out to do whatever, and it would drink the water, I guess, I'm assuming, and come home one afternoon and let her out of the pen, and she couldn't even walk. She's gone. Then I had a bird dog that basically done the same thing, and I had to have her put down just here recently and stuff. But it's a mess, and we have begged and pleaded for them to fix it. If it would work, it'd be great, but the more they try, the worse they make it. And it's way overpopulated for that piece of land they've got. And they've also got another patch at the Bowen Park, and it's real bad. So I appreciate anything you all could do.
Thanks.
Hi. My name is Tina Bowen, and I live at 313 East Apple Blossom. I had a grandson, two years old, he's now four. They, my kids all live out of state, so they come to visit, our grandkids did. And my two-year-old grandson actually got away from us and got under the fencing and got out there and played in that. We can't let our children out because it's just like, it's on top of the ground and it's flowing everywhere. I've gotten on to children that's come from the Bowen Park and from the park over by that city council because children cut through there to walk home to the apartment complex up the road from us. And I'm like, "You all don't realize, that is not muddy water. It's sewage, and it's just black, and it stays right at the end of our drive. And on the other side of us is Mercy Emergency 911." And I just think that's just nasty. And I've got grandchildren that I can't let outside to play because it's everywhere and it smells so bad. So we would like for Springdale to consider annexing us into Springdale so that we can get this dissolved and resolved and out of the way. Because I've complained, I've called Little Rock, I've gotten tips to call Texas Next to complain about this because the children are at risk, we're at risk, the city's at risk because that is running into our drinking water. It's going straight to the lakes. So we would appreciate the help.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to ask a quick question of the city attorney.
Okay.
Ernest, how many signatures does Bethel Heights need? I understand from Joe, there's twenty-eight forty needed in Springdale. How many are needed in Bethel Heights?
The statute says that it's at least fifteen percent of the number of votes cast for mayor in the last mayoral election. My understanding is that somewhere in the neighborhood of the mid-fifties, maybe fifty-five, fifty-six would be needed in Bethel Heights to be sufficient for their petition.
Well, somebody even as slow as Joe Brooks ought to accomplish that.
Ernest, can I ask one quick question? I thought I heard you ask Joe or say you needed, you wanted Springdale's permission to start a petition? Is that necessary?
What the statute requires is that the petition has to identify or designate the person that's authorized to circulate the petition, obtain signatures, and that's been done.
Okay.
I know that there's been an attorney engaged for some of these property owners, and that attorney's even communicated with the state GIS office, so they're following the letter of the statute as they go through this. This is just the first process.
Thank you. I didn't have the answer. I just assumed if there was a petition for any reason that it didn't require a city giving authorization.
Would the petition be for the entire city of Bethel Heights to come into Springdale? Or is it for Bethel Heights to dissolve? And would Lowell bring in part, or is this all Springdale?
It's actually, the section of statute's actually consolidation, so it would be a consolidation of the smaller city into the larger city, which in this case would be Bethel Heights into Springdale, if it passes both cities.
And that's what's on your petition that you're circulating now from Bethel Heights?
What's the difference in the petitions that are necessary when individual property owners want to be annexed into the city and this? I understand this is dissolving of a municipality, but what's the difference? In other words, what's the reason for the property owners not petitioning to de-anex from Bethel Heights and annex into Springdale if that would not be a simpler?
You know, we've already had, we've had that happen. We had about an eighty, eighty or so acres that we annexed in in 2015 for the purpose of obtaining sewer service. We also had one in June, early June, that we annexed in almost a hundred acres. A property owner requested to come in from Bethel Heights into Springdale. And by the way, Bethel Heights is challenging that, just like they did in the one in 2015, and we prevailed. I know that there's at least one more property owner, actually, two more property owners, but I know that have done that. But I think at this point, it's just, I can't speak for these folks, but my understanding is that at this point, instead of piecemealing it, they're just ready to throw their hands up and say, "Let's all go into Springdale." Or let the voters decide.
Well, that's why I wanted to ask.
That's what would happen. It won't be a mayor or a council of either city that decides.
Yeah, I understand.
It's going to be the voters of both cities if this...
And the point is that, like Ernest said, it's gotten to the point, there's no going back of trying to cooperate or encourage them to cure the ongoing problem.
But Ernest, on the petition by the individual property owners, they have to have a reason, like the city can't provide them with certain services and...
They have to request services and then...
And they can't provide them. So there has to be a reason there. In this proceeding, you don't have to have a reason, do you? It's just the percentage of people that get the petition, and as long as they get the petition...
Correct. As long as they get the requisite number of signatures on the petition and those petitions are certified, then it goes to the voters.
So there wouldn't be the same basis for Bethel Heights to challenge it...
Oh, no.
As they do property owners.
It'll come down to the votes.
Yeah.
And what would happen to the assets of the city? Does that automatically come into Springdale?
That is all provided in the statute, consolidation statute, if that's all provided for, yes.
And is it a simple majority vote?
In both cities.
Both cities.
Not a cumulative, just Bethel Heights has to approve it, Springdale has to approve it.
Ms. Charlotte, you want to...
Yes, thank you. My name is Charlotte Steele, and I have a property right next to, there's a little road between the sewage and our property. Well, unbeknownst to me, it's sort of to the back, and my nephew, Joe Brooks, was up there and got Jason, my son, and the sewer water was pooling on top, I wished I had pictures. I guess we didn't bring them, sorry. Anyway, you cannot believe it. It is a health hazard. It's criminal. I mean, if some child got in that stuff and, you know, got a cut or happened to drink it or something, you know, they could die. And I really, my son, Jason, runs Black Angus on the property, and three of them have died. So he put an electric fence around the pond where they'd been drinking. Also, we found a pipe from over there going into the pond, two, two different pipes, two different ponds. And I'll just say this, I am so glad you all are so open at city council. I've been to Bethel Heights City Council, and you know, I would have thought I might have been in communist Russia. I mean, they didn't say anything. We had, there was fifteen minutes. And so the number that spoke, they, I think it was three minutes one time and then two minutes. And we had a man that is from town service to look into this, test it, and have him sent off and everything. We've even sent it to Florida. We've done our due diligence. And Mayor Black was talking to Mr. Drinkwater and explaining it to her, and she said, "That's your opinion." So we desperately need to come into Springdale. Love Springdale. I want to be in Springdale. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With the Springdale Water Department being its own entity and them being on a step system, what does that commitment look like from the water department?
Joe, yeah, he might want, I know Joe's had several conversations with Springdale Water and Ernest has, too.
They're evaluating this, but they'll basically kill that system, put lift stations and pipelines to hit the main line, and they're looking at how you fix this. And the last conversation, they said they would pump it to the facility until the pipeline gets in. They're going to shut these fields that don't work down, and they'll put lift stations around and treat this like a legitimate sewer deal rather than just running raw sewage down the ditch.
So there's not going to be any more step system once this...
Well, I'm not going to speak for, you know, Heath and Rick, but I don't think so from what I understand.
Bethel Heights already gets their water from Springdale. The water department's not allowing any more new connections because of the...
Yeah. Anybody else?
So thank you for your time. Again, they've already got close, I think around sixty, and they're still working on it. But from what I'm told, about ninety percent of the citizens approached are for coming to Springdale.
Okay.
So...
Just for clarification, this has been handed out?
Yeah, this is what they're handing out. It was put together on this.
So Joe, you're asking us to agree to have an election, right?
Agree to start a petition.
I think that has to come after...
We want to start the petition, and then if we get the, when we get the twenty-nine hundred signatures...
Then we look at an election.
Then we look at an election.
The statute provides, once they present the petition and the signatures have been verified, it comes to this body.
So there's an election in Bethel to dissolve, and then there has to be an election here for you all to take them.
Somehow there would have to be a coordination. I guess the county would do that, where the...
I'm told the county clerks, the attorneys work with the clerks.
Because the elections would have to be on the same day.
So here's my question, and maybe this would be more appropriate when we're deciding to have the election or not, but primarily, everybody that spoke was Bowens on Apple Blossom Road.
Well, there's others here that aren't...
Well, I know, and that's okay. I'm sure they're probably all in favor of this. But my question is, what about the rest of the city that's going to be voting that don't live so close to Apple Blossom? Do you have any kind of a feel, or do the Bowens or anybody have any kind of a feel for, you said ninety percent of the people have been approached...
No, they've been in neighborhoods away from there.
That's what I'm asking.
Over on wagon wheel, over on...
How do those people feel about it?
You want to, Ms. Bowen, you want to come up here?
No.
You've got to come up here and get on TV, Arlen. While he's coming...
And talk slowly without the drawl.
While he's coming, I would imagine that, I would imagine that property owners and developers that someday may want to develop their property would have a stake in this, for sure.
Arlen Williamson, and I live next to one of the treatment plants, and I have experienced, I hadn't said anything because it's not near my house, but my first, I don't know how many years ago, four or five, I stored my hay on the west end of this sewer plant and exercise track to get around. Anyway, I have experienced the runoff, and then there's a draw down back in my property down through the middle of it. Every year, I've seen it. So I don't, you know, it's not a new thing, and I don't, I'm concerned because that thing comes right up next to me, and I didn't go when they were getting it voted through the citizens or whatever. And now I'm afraid they're going to come and take my land and expand on me. I don't want no more of that. I've already got, I'm just thinking, I've already got a Springdale address, so all you got to do is just help us with the sewer, and we're going to be in Springdale all the way. Anyway.
And in your conversation with people, you got...
Oh, yeah. I visited with some people Sunday afternoon, and I, without mentioning any names, I don't think I found us, there might have been a couple that were just moved in. don't think I found a, there might have been a couple that were just moved in. But they ever, one of them was plum hostile over the situation they got. One of them, or two of them over there off of Wagon Wheel had had to pump that, anyway, I don't know, pump the septic tank out or do something, and they, they, they wanted out of that thing. I could mention their name, but they, but they better be the ones to do that.
That's right. Thank you, Arlen.
Thank you.
All right. Any more public comments on this or anything else? Yeah, Joe?
And Ernest, I guess you gotta decide, but I'm real big in disclosure, so y'all need to know about this. And then I assumed we needed to get the council's blessing before we take off on this to try to get the signatures to have the election. But that's up to y'all.
There's really no action yet to be taken tonight, but-
Is there action to be taken anytime, or do they just go forward?
A petition.
It's a voluntary position, petition, so there's nothing for us to do?
But the interest is there.
Initiates the petition. It will be the, the Springdale resident that's been identified already that will initiate the petition. And any more on that, Joe? That pretty well covered?
That's better.
Okay. I think, I think the only, and, and council, if you disagree with this, let me know, but I thi, I think the, you all are seeking a remedy that is provided for by the state constitution and by the law, and you definitely have a problem, and you're seeking that remedy. And you are initiating this, and the city of Springdale will abide by the, by the, certainly by the, by the people that we represent. And, and so if this moves forward the way it, the way it could, the way, the way I know y'all hope it will, then the council, I think the, I think the, I think the statute says when presented with a, with a petition, the council shall, not may or not might, but shall call for that election. So if y'all do your work, we'll do, we'll do ours, and get the, get, get the election going.
Did I, did I hear you say that it had to be Benton County residents of Springdale that-
I think all of Bethel Heights is in Benton County. No, but, no, but all of Springdale will vote. Any, any Springdale resident can sign the petition, and-
Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here.
Thanks, Joe. Thanks, everybody.
Appreciate it. Are there any other comments from anyone before we move on? All right. Seeing none? If you see a comment, I guess you hear comments, but I don't see anybody getting up to make a comment, so. We, we are at item six, approval of minutes. Hopefully, council, you've had an opportunity to look over those. If there are no additions or changes, I would entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item seven, procedural motions. What's your pleasure, council?
Second.
Okay. Got a motion for A and B. Roll call, please.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Here's eight zero.
Item eight, planning commissioner reporting recommendations. Patsy is out, and Aaron is going to stand in for her. So Aaron, take it away.
It's the backup squad here tonight, so good evening, council, mayor. I have four items for you tonight. The, the first one, and I'm gonna go ahead and read the ordinance out here. It's in, it's an ordinance amending chapter thirty-two, the Code of Ordinance of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, the Downtown District Form Based Code declaring emergency and for other purposes. The background is on this is when the form based code was created and adopted by the city of Springdale. It is a, a pretty rigid code, and we noticed some parcels, specifically I've identified three here. One wasn't even included. It's the one to the south that was adjacent to the airfield, large parcel. And we had a, a lot of discussion on that, and it just made sense for it to come into the form based code. And the other two were more so in a campus type, and just really weren't suitable for what kind of the market was demanding for those. And so they have gotten a lot of interest, and we are presenting those tonight. They were presented at planning commission, it was this last planning commission, and it was a ADO vote for approval or recommendation to you guys, so if you have any questions, please let me know.
Aaron's read the ordinance.
Orders de pass.
Second.
Are there any other questions or discussion?
We didn't go over this, I don't think, at committee, but-
Yeah.
Is there anyone that objected to their property coming into this for any reason?
No.
No.
No, sir, there weren't.
I know that in at least one case-
Yeah, it was-
-called of someone the morning.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know about all three.
Yeah, we have a current development that's going through a large scale development process right now. It was announced at our, our downtown kind of promotion from the, the DSA, and they're in one of these, and it just helps them have more flexibility in what they're doing, and it just, it just fits that intent of what we want over there. So they actually came to us and requested that, so.
Okay. Good. Any other comments or questions? Okay, Rose.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Second.
All right. Second item is, and I'm gonna go unless you guys-
You gotta do an emergency call.
Oh, sorry, yep, sorry, yep.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency calls carry eight zero.
There we go. All right. Jumped the gun a little bit there. Unless you guys have any other preference from this council, I'll just go ahead and read this one again. This is an ordinance amending ordinance number thirty-three oh seven, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from agricultural district A1 to thoroughfare commercial district C5, and declaring an emergency. If you're not familiar with this, it's shown up there on the map. This is that liquor store on the corner of there of Sunset and the interstate, and it was A1 prior to this, and so our land use plan designates it as being the zoning that they are proposing, so it is in, in line with our guides in our land use plan and was recommended with ADO from the planning commission. So if you have any questions, please let me know.
Second.
Motion and second. Questions? Anyone in the audience?
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency calls carry eight zero.
Okay, next item is, it's another amendment to the zoning ordinance here, amending ordinance number thirty-three oh seven, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from A1 agricultural district to low medium density multifamily residential district MF4, and declaring an emergency. This switches more to the east side of town, southeast side of town, as you can see below the school district over there. And this also had a ADO recommendation from planning commission and was recommended to you guys for approval. So please let me know if you have any questions on this.
Pass.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Comments or questions? Anyone?
Powell?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency calls carry eight zero.
All right. And lastly, for planning agenda tonight, we have another ordinance amending ordinance number thirty-three oh seven, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from institutional district P1 to low medium density single family residential district SF2, and declaring an emergency. The history on this was that a, there used to be a church here, and they, they did have a development, and they tried to work out the development, but the cost was just too much for them. And so they, I guess they chose to go to a different area, and they had many buyers approach them, but it would have to go back to single family, too. And it is, it's gonna be one of those more difficult parcels developed because it's so long and narrow. So it is, the land use plan does kind of designate it as single family, so this is in keeping with our land use plan, and this one was also recommended with an ADO, ADO approval from planning commission.
Seems like I remember dealing with this a while back. May have been when it went to P1.
It did, and it's good for the, I guess it's good for the group, because they do have the, they were, they authorized the person that was in a contract with them to bring this forward, so it is in that process, so.
Okay.
Pass. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? Anyone? Okay, Rose.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency calls carry eight zero.
Okay, next item is, it's another amendment to the zoning ordinance here, amending ordinance number thirty-three oh seven, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from A1 agricultural district to low medium density multifamily residential district MF4, and declaring an emergency. This switches more to the east side of town, southeast side of town, as you can see below the school district over there. And this also had a ADO recommendation from planning commission and was recommended to you guys for approval. So please let me know if you have any questions on this.
Pass.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Comments or questions? Anyone?
Powell?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency calls carry eight zero.
Next, we have a resolution authorizing service contract for street and sidewalk trail improvement to Watkins Avenue, project number eighteen BS.
I'll move the resolution pass.
Second.
I forgot a, Wyman brought me this right before the meeting, and I, so I've just got one copy, but if y'all would like to pass that around, it's just the preliminary layout for that, so you'll, you'll see the project. It's very preliminary, but that's, that's what they're starting with. Okay, we've got a motion and a second, right? Any other comments or questions?
This is gonna be a great project.
Yes, it will be.
I notice the newspaper did an article on it this morning, so-
Right.
They'll do another one if we don't pass it. All right, if there's no other comments, I'll ask for the vote.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
It's where, it's where the, the Pete's Head on the corner there, across from.
Oh, this is the, this old laundromat?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, I got you. I remember.
So that's the building. I'm not looking at the Pete's Head at this time, and there's actually two buildings on this parcel that go with the laundromat, and I'm just looking at the one that was the laundromat at this time, so.
Move ordinance pass.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
I don't know if anybody's here to speak on that property.
Yeah, I'll, we do have a motion and a second. Is there anyone that needs to comment on this?
Is there business in the other building?
There is no business in any of those buildings at this time, sir.
The other, the other one that we're not dealing with was the Domino's.
Was the Domino's, which they built their own site, and it's been empty since then. And then the other one is, which is part of this property, is, I think, was some kind of storage, but I'm not looking at that property or that building at this time, so.
Just the laundromat.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Rose?
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency calls carry eight zero.
All right. Thank you, council. Thank you, Tom. Do we have any comments from department heads? Go ahead, Tom.
As the stand-in council, our department head, I do have a comment. I was asked to provide some information about two fifteen West Maple and the progress we're getting on that. And I've been asked several times. So, you know, we did have a little start back on May first, which is where they just got some temporary electric. So then, kind of went dormant again. I was told that they were still negotiating finalized, finalized plans. After being asked to provide this last week, I was actually contacted on their own, telling me that they were gonna get started in earnest. So then, it's like, they actually did call, and I performed the first inspection, which was like a spread footing for the existing house, trying to shore up some of that on the eighteenth, and then they didn't, they called again on the nineteenth for some additional pier footings for the existing part that's still standing right now. Eric Hansen, who is the contractor in charge, tells me that they will be on this project until it's finished from now on, and he says this week will be their least productive week because they only have three people, but there will be three people working every day. Some guy's on vacation, he'll be back next week, but there'll typically be four people, and they'll be working until this is finished, so, I mean, I'm hoping that's the case, so.
Good news.
Any questions about that? Okay. All right, thank you. Ashley, I think you had something.
We have three public input sessions coming up in the next couple of weeks. This week, we have Dean's Trail Phase Three that's gonna be at J.O. Kelly Middle School from four to six p.m. That's Thursday, July twenty-fifth. And then we have two input sessions for our 2020 budget. The first one is gonna be on Monday, July twenty-ninth, from one thirty to three thirty p.m. And the second is Tuesday, July thirtieth, from five to seven.
And they're all here?
Oh, nope, sorry. The budget sessions are here, yes.
Okay. All right. Comments from council?
I have a comment, mayor. You know, I'm often asked why I've always voted against waste management and the extension of our trash service, because it's always been an extension of the old Sunray contract. Well, I had a, had an opportunity to have a personal interaction in this last couple of weeks. I contacted Waste Management about setting up two eight-yard dumpsters on two pieces of commercial property that I manage. Had to sign the contract with the folks for one hundred and seventy-nine fifty-one a month. I received an invoice then, from, two invoices from Waste Management, and the reason for explaining this is to encourage folks to look carefully at their dealings. Number one, I had a one hundred and fifty-dollar delivery charge, which I guess that's just a gotcha number. Then a prorated one hundred and twenty-five dollar and eighty-one cents dumpster charge, which makes sense. And then another, even though they had quoted the one seventy-nine fifty-one, then another one hundred and thirty-dollar dumpster charge, and then a fuel environmental charge for one hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-one cents. Also, a regulatory cost recovery charge of nineteen forty-one, and then an administrative charge of six dollars and fifty cents, and then the normal, which you expect, state, local, and county taxes, for a total for a one hundred and seventy-nine fifty-one contract price of six hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-five cents. The one adjacent to me was also an eight-yard dumpster. And again, the price was one hundred and seventy-nine fifty-one, the delivery charge was a hundred and fifty bucks, prorated service charge was one twenty-five eighty-one, the same as the other one, and then a lock charge for the unit, which there is no lock on the unit, of fifteen dollars, and then a container service plan of nine ninety-five, who knows what that is, and then the dumpster service charge for the next month of a hundred and thirty, and then a regulatory cost and, excuse me, a fuel and environmental charge of a hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty-three cents, and then the regulatory recovery charge of twenty dollars and sixty-one cents, then the administrative charge of six dollars and fifty cents, plus the state, local, and county taxes, for a total of six fifty-six seventeen. And when you called, actually, I called, assuming this was in Tawny Town, when I called, when I called back to contact somebody about the bills, number one, heard that that person didn't exist. Well, come to find out, Waste Management's sales office, who you have to deal with, are in Phoenix, Arizona. Their billing is in Boston, Massachusetts, and their corporate office is in Lexington, Kentucky. And no one will talk to you. You have to talk to the sales folks. They won't return the calls, et cetera, so it's a gotcha number. So my, my caution is to look carefully when you're dealing with these folks.
All right, thanks, Mike. I, I would assume that some of those charges are required, the search, but, but they should let you know, they should give you a bottom-line dollar.
Well, I'll give you, I'll give you an example, mayor. A competitor, their fuel adjustment charge is twenty-nine dollars versus a hundred and forty-three.
Urban wear, yeah. Okay, thanks, Mike.
And, yeah, they don't divulge anything about that.
Our, our contract does not cover commercial dumpsters.
Right.
I understand it doesn't, but my point is of why I've always been concerned about these folks is the way they do business, and we've never put it out for bid. We've always extended the old Sunray contract, when in fact, there are other competitors that can, I'm sure, that can deliver service to the citizens at a reduced rate.
I think, you know, there were a lot of things that played into that, such as sludge disposal, things like that, that were savings to our residents, that may not be as much the case anymore. So when, I, I think it, I think it would be, I would certainly support going to bid this next time because we're, we're in a different world now.
Yes.
As, now that we've got another solution we're working on for sludge and other things. So there were some benefits, but, but, but again, as Wyman said, the commercial side of it is, is different, but, but, but we, we have issues, too, on the, on the residential side. And, and we help. This is a good opportunity to tell people. If you have a problem with, with your trash service, trash or recycling with Waste Management, it's your residents, we have a much better way of getting hold of them than you do. So call my office if, if you have that issue, and, and we'll help you deal with that, so.
Mayor, when is their, maybe you don't like, when is their, I'm sorry, Doug. Okay, maybe I shouldn't ask, when is the contract?
It was a five-year extension of the old Sunray contract, because when we extend it, we don't have.
But where are we in the contract cycle?
Probably a year and a half in it.
You remember Wyman, where we're at? We can find that out for you and let you know. Because.
Guess they have a couple of years left? Okay.
Wasn't it a three-year, but they were gonna provide a new truck of some sort?
Me, what we did, there was three years left, and we gave them an extra two, so it was five, but I don't, but I don't know what's left on it.